Thank you for coming. We open up with public audience. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share at this point in the meeting? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Board and Administrative Communications. Ms. Katie?
Yes, okay. So, school just started again, so not too much today. Following the, back in October, all the elementary schools had their first cultural enrichment program, which was toying with science. And this next week, they will have the next one. And the Beethoven Quintet will be coming to visit all the elementary schools. Latimer Lane had their first family tree meeting, in which groups of students from various grade levels and an adult spent the afternoon creating a family. And this event is the result of the work of the climate and culture team. And these families will meet several more times this year to encourage connections between grade levels and with students with various members of the faculty and staff in the school. And with the end of the semester, midterms and end-of-course assessments are coming up for the middle and high school students.
Excellent report. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Katie. Welcome back.
Happy New Year. I'm Tom.
Nothing this evening.
I just wanted to share that the Community for Care will be sponsoring their next program tomorrow night at the Simsbury Public Library regarding vaping. So, we have members of the Department of Public Health coming in. This is kind of a repeat of a program that we did last year that was very well-attended, and we received great feedback from that. Our school resource officers will also be in attendance, sharing information and asking questions. So, we certainly encourage anyone in the public to come and join us again tomorrow evening, 6:30 at the Simsbury Public Library.
I went last year, and it was really fabulous. It was so well-done, so I really encourage anybody, whether you think you need to or not, you should go and listen, because it makes great conversation with your kid.
Yeah, I would just add to that, or support that, too, because I went also last year, because I had a special interest in the presentation. And I, too, think it was very, very good, and I'm glad we're doing it again. And probably because the problem seems to be getting worse, not better. So, thank you for continuing to do that.
Just wanted to update the board that we have dug in already on our Facilities and Enrollment Master Plan that was approved through the capital improvement budget last year. My part of it is the enrollment data. We're working with the firm Malone and McBroom that I talked about during the Nezdek enrollment projection, and sending them mountains of data. And it's really been exciting work. And we've only been kind of engaged with them for, since December, and it's really kicked off in a big way. And they're, you know, really making a lot of requests of us that we're meeting, and it's an exciting project. And I know that Burke's end of it, that the architects have already been out to a couple of the schools to examine facilities. So, they really hit the ground running, and we'll be looking forward to reporting to the board about progress in the months ahead.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Burke?
Just briefly, you've all got the Board of Ed budget binder in front of you. In two of the tabs tonight, you'll be able to refer to going forward. So, you've got the Special Education tab, which has Sue's presentation in it. So, if you need to make any notes there, you have that. And then also the Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Both the memo and the updated draft are in that as well. And then it has, the first page is our schedule of workshop meetings, and we'll be adding, you know, be adding content to it at each, at each meeting.
Thank you.
I have one share. I just wanted, and you can comment if you like. Several of us, I know Neil had an opportunity to attend. And I've put the booklet in everybody's folder. We had a chance to go to the Simsbury Hall of Fame induction, the second induction. Last year, obviously, was the kickoff of this event, and it was really a fantastic evening. I think there were 260, 270 people that came out. The inductees came from all over the country to return to Simsbury High School. We honored, I think, eight athletes, a coach, and then a special team. So, all the bios are in here, but what was just priceless were the stories, and the lessons learned that people talked about, and the value of athletics, and the importance that Simsbury High School played in their lives. So, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Oh, I would just add a huge, huge thank you to Jeff Kinney and his committee and his, and his staff, everyone who got that together, because it was a very professional event, and it was very well-received. The Synacories videotaped it. Nick in our audience here, he videotaped it, so anyone can watch it on SCTV.
Oh, it's great.
And I recommend that you do, because it was quite a spectacular event and wonderful lessons and messages sent.
Yeah, absolutely.
But, big congratulations to them to get it done. It's really very impressive. Moving on, I think that's all for me. We can move on to the approval of minutes of December 11th meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All those opposed? All right. And now, moving on to personnel.
Several items tonight, as we clean up from the end of last year, and talk about some new hires that we've made this year. So, first, a approval is required for two different child-rearing leaves of absence. Jennifer Dion is our library, library media specialist, was at the high school for many years. She's now transferred to Central School after the birth of her first child. She is requesting the rest of this year. And Elena McNamara, who is a special educator at the high school, had the birth of twins that she is celebrating. So, she will be busy for the remainder of this year. Both of these are non-salaried leaves, and the way it works is that the dates that are in the motion are whether their maternity leave ends, and then it's non-salaried for the remainder of this year, with a guarantee that we're holding your job come August. So, if somebody would separately read those two motions in the vote...
I'll take the first motion, if someone would be so kind. Make the motion. You make the motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the request for non-salaried guaranteed leave of absence for Jennifer Dion, effective February 20th, 2019, to June 30th, 2019.
Second?
Second.
Thanks, Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I need someone to do the second motion, if they would be so kind.
Move that the Board of Education approve, sorry, lost my place, approve non-salaried guaranteed leave of absence for Elena McNamara, effective January 12, 2018, to June 30th, 2019.
Thanks, Sue.
Second?
Thanks, Jen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Back to you.
Okay. One resignation that we unfortunately have to take care of, and that is Anna Harris, who is a fifth-grade teacher at Latimer Lane for the last two and a half years. Anna is very active in our community as a parent and volunteer on many different things. She's been an educational leader in a lot of ways. Came to the Simsbury Public Schools because wanted to be a part of our district, has a lot of talents beyond the classroom. The position she has now accepted, she's become an instructional coach with the Avon Public Schools. So, it's a tremendous growth opportunity for Anna, and one that she could not turn down at this point. So, her last day with us was the day before the holiday break, and unfortunately, we have to accept Anna's resignation, with the hope that maybe we'll have a position someday to entice her back to Simsbury.
She's a wonderful teacher.
We need a motion for that.
We need a motion.
I'm not making it.
I understand completely, but someone has to, because the poor woman has another job.
Move that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Anna Harris, effective December 21st, 2018.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good luck to her endeavors.
Yep. And we will stay in touch, I'm sure. And then the appointments that don't require Board vote, but we certainly always want to make sure that you're informed. These are the, we covered one resignation last time, and the other replacement here is for Anna Harris. So, Jill Schwartz is becoming the grade-five teacher that's replacing Anna. Jill has most recently been one of our math tutors at the elementary school as a certified teacher. Most of her work before that came down in Long Island, where she had been living before the birth of her children, came back to us, got back into it as a tutor. And Mike Lizetti down at Latimer Lane was excited to be able to offer her a fifth-grade opportunity when it came open. So, congratulations to Jill. And now, if anybody knows a good math tutor, we're trying to fill that position. And then Christine Neskey is taking a grade-six job. She also started last week on January 2nd. Christine comes to us, most recently, from the Suffield Public Schools, and before that had many years of teaching down in Maryland, in the greater Washington DC area. And just really steeped in our workshop models, interview and demo lessons were fabulous. It really had her rise to the top. So, busy down at Latimer Lane School with these fifth and sixth-grade appointments, but we're really pleased. We had some good people leave, so we're pleased to see some good people come into those.
Great. Thank you very much for your hard work to find people. That's excellent. Moving on to the acceptance of Simsbury Travel Basketball.
Yes, I have a new scholarship to present to you for your review and for your approval, the Simsbury Travel Basketball Scholarship, that was reviewed by Principal O'Brien and Jane Ellen Peregrin, the Director of Guidance at the high school. This is intended to be awarded to two graduating seniors that have played Simsbury Travel Basketball in the amount of $500 each, one to a male, one to a female. And the criteria is that they're in good standing, good character, good academic standing. And possibly to students that have not received any other scholarship, that this would go to. And this will be reviewed and given by the high school scholarship committee, so.
Wonderful. That's great. I'll take a moment.
Who's providing that scholarship?
The Simsbury...
Simsbury Travel Basketball Club.
That's wonderful. It really is.
It says it's beginning in 2018.
I think that's a mistake.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to check.
I didn't even see that. Thank you.
Yep. You can do the motion. All right, then.
Move that the Board of Education...
It's January. We have a Simsbury Travel Basketball Scholarship to be dispersed beginning in 2019.
Excellent. Thank you, Sue. Second?
Second.
Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. That's really nice. Thank you very much. Great parameters, too. Moving on to the robotics team. We are going to, we have a, they're late, they're a little delayed getting here, so we're going to open this up when they arrive.
They're at robotics right now?
Yes.
They're at robotics right now. They will be up here when they can, and we will, we will be, we will get back to that. Moving ahead, the update on the strategic plan.
Perfect. All right. So, this evening, what I would like to do, and I know, Tom, you had asked me about this a while ago. We had kicked off in October our strategic planning process. So, I wanted to review where we are in that process, and I have three or four, I think four slides to go through that we'll share with you, some of the advancement we've made since we last got together as a large group. So, the first slide is really a visual you've seen before. I include it often in the budget process, and it's just a reminder that here in Simsbury, we work under a model of continuous improvement that's really the backbone for how we go about doing our strategic work. And this is just a representation of the coherence that it creates between levels in our organization. So, we're going to talk in a few minutes a little bit about our Board of Education five-year goals, and that's really the foundational document from which we plan. But from that point, the district, the central office, creates a continuous improvement plan on an annual basis. That flows down to both program leaders and building-level principals, who mirror that process. And it actually flows all the way down to the teacher plans and their evaluation documents. So, it allows us to take our strategic priorities from a high-leverage standpoint and create a coherent system throughout the organization for consistency, and really a good, solid structure to work from. It's been in place for a long time. We feel good about it. It works, and we will continue on with that model. I know that was very important when we got into this new cycle. So, why we're talking about revamping that is we work on a five-year cycle, and that is the point we're at now. So, if you go to the next slide...
Does that mean we update every five years, or is that a rolling update?
Every five years.
Five years.
Every five years, yep. So, we came together as a group. It was the entire Board of Ed. It was our entire administrative council in a workshop in October that was facilitated by Richard Lemmons. And in that workshop, we looked at our new vision of the graduate document, really had some great dialogue. We looked at our current Board of Education goals, and we went through some different exercises to consolidate and get feedback on new direction we wanted to go in. So, coming out of that meeting, we established kind of broad areas for those Board of Ed goals. I put those up on this slide. I didn't include all the language that evolved for the specific goals. That's in your board packet. But the first goal focuses on student growth and success, and really, that is how we create meaningful and challenging learning experiences for our kids, right? The work that's encompassed there. Some of the new work around vision of the graduate that will be process-oriented, in terms of analyzing curriculum and looking at assessment, will fall largely under that goal as well. The second goal is really our school culture and our community culture goal, compassionate and connected school culture, and that's where we think about creating those inclusive, responsive, and safe communities.
Is that word compassionate, is that, has that shown up in previous plans, or is that kind of a new idea?
That was new coming out of this, out of this conversation. Premier workforce, largely our human resource and personnel goal. It's where we focus on our hiring, our investing, and retaining of really a high-quality workforce and the conditions that we put in place to foster that work. And then the strategic and sustainable investments, that's our business, business goal. And we did have a lot of good productive dialogue about that, and how we advocate for our needs, how we look about creating long-term stability within our organization and fiscal, fiscal responsibility. So, those are the key categories. What I wanted to talk through tonight are the components in the plan that come after that, and just give you a snapshot of what that, what that looks like. So, from that point, we take each of these goals, each of these broad goals, and we identify overarching strategies that will support those goals. From those strategies, we really think about outcomes. What do we want this to look like in the end? And then we list those specific actionable items that will get us to those outcomes. The last main piece of the puzzle is talking about the measurables, right? We, we talk about, many board members will ask us, how do we know about the improvement effort? How can we quantify where we are? So, the last piece of the puzzle is to come up with those metrics in different areas that will allow us to have not only internal conversations, but external conversations with our community as well. One thing that we're particularly excited about with this plan is we're moving to a new format. It's a format that we discovered in kind of our brainstorming and looking at what some other districts are doing. Fairfax County in particular, which is a pretty progressive district, has a, has a format that we think will resonate with both the general public and be pretty user-friendly from an in-house standpoint for folks. So, I wanted to try to provide a snapshot of how these steps play out into one of the goals without overwhelming people with words. I know I put more of the information in the packet. But this is the premier workforce goal. That's what I, what I've put up on the, on the screen. I just want to show how the pieces kind of tie out. So, you have your, your goal language there that we talked about. You may have several strategies to support this goal, so I pulled one of those strategies out. So, one of the strategies we've talked about is prioritizing growth and teamwork, right? And really investing in those growth opportunities around professional development. And we've identified some desired outcomes, and certainly, you can have more than one desired outcome for each of these, each of these priorities. But to promote professional development for all employees that support a challenging, collaborative, and innovative culture. Then the actions that I talk about will support that. And what you see to the right is the five-year cycle, Tom, that you referenced, and we're going to create an innovation configuration that will allow us to chart that progress a long time, so we can really report out in a very standardized way across multiple audiences. So, that's something we're, we're pretty excited about. The work since we got together has been to develop this. So, we've both met in large-group administrative council, and then people in central office have facilitated small-group work on each of the goals. So, we'll go away, we'll work small group, we'll come back, we'll report out to the large group. So, in terms of next steps on this, and it is a bit of a tedious process, but it certainly is important enough that we, we have to put the time in throughout the year to feel good about this. So, we have a large administrative council meeting next week, where we'll come together, and in large part, we're going to work on that student success goal, really flushing out. We have some drafts to go over and get feedback from our administrators on that. That's probably the most comprehensive and encompassing of the four goals. And then we have a February full-day retreat. We do this every year in late February, but we are going to bring Richard Lemmons in again. He's going to work with us in the morning, and we're going to come away with really, most of the nuts and bolts completed, and we'll complete the year in kind of a refinement process, and come back to you and report out and share with you in greater detail what this report looks like. So, again, it's a lot of work. It's been churning behind the scenes, but I thought it was important, as you did, Tom, to come forward and talk to the, the board again and general public about where we are in this process. So, we can certainly answer any questions, but I wanted to give a quick overview of that tonight.
Just a couple of questions, comments. As a relatively new board member, I think three years I haven't been through this process, and it is ambitious, because you're doing it in budget season, aren't you, concurrent with budgets?
It's spread out, but yeah, it's interwoven, for sure.
It's going to be quite, quite a challenge, I'm sure, but you'll be successful with that. The only question I really have is about this process and the next steps list. And I'm just wondering if the board, if it would be possible to have at least one checkpoint with the board sometime between now and the May presentation time?
Absolutely.
Especially if there are any really significant changes in the plan. I think it would, it would be healthy if we could get a little interim, interim check. That's all.
We could do that at a meeting, or we could do a workshop-type environment. We can talk about that as we, as it evolves.
Yeah.
For sure. Okay.
Can I ask you a quick question on compassionate and connected school cultures? As you know, we've seen in these student surveys from the high school on down, it's all issue of respect. I mean, I keep raising, I'm sure you guys are tired of me asking this question, but would that be baked into, maybe this is a leading question. Would that be under the umbrella of compassion and connected school culture? And if it's not, could we please include it and make sure?
Yeah, that would be one of the data points, key data points that we would be looking for, absolutely.
That's a theme we've seen at all levels. It'd be great to think about that one as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one other question. Having gone through this myself in a business environment for, for a long time, my sense is that these plans sort of get reviewed, to some extent, each year with the, in business with the operating budget. And so, we'll be having, each year, we'll be having an operating budget discussion, and sometimes, things come up that would cause the management and, and the board to want to say, well, maybe, maybe we need some adjustments to the plan.
Yep.
Normally, we have a five-year...
Right.
...time horizon, but if something happens, maybe we do some adjustments. Could you comment on whether or not that is something that we have done in the, in the past?
I mean, we've certainly made adjustments along the way and reprioritized initiatives, and I think the goals, when you start are broad enough, that it certainly allows us to do that and make the adjustments we need to organizationally.
And sometimes, when we've met both goals in the past, you know, then you readjust, because you meet them, you know?
I mean, one of the key shifts we made here that I thought was, you know, really important to think about and dialogue that came largely from the board and administrators, where we used to have a standalone communication goal, where we shifted a lot of practices, changed the way we did things in terms of public reporting. Now, we're taking that importance of communication, and we're embedding it in each of these other goals. So, that was like a conscious shift we made moving through.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Now, I think, anyone else have any questions? I'm sorry, I shouldn't be here. Yay.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm glad that you say yay, as I walk up to the table. That's great.
I mean it.
Well, thank you. So, it's always a privilege for Nancy and I to be able to share with the board our passion about working with students who are differently abled here in Simsbury, and sharing the good work that our department is doing. So, tonight, I really want to start us by focusing on our mission. And at the heart of our mission is our students, every single time. And they're surrounded by an incredible faculty and staff, caring, invested families, in this larger, greater Simsbury community, who really look to promote the passion of our students, their independence, and their ability to succeed at very high levels once they leave Simsbury Public Schools. So, something that's very familiar to the board are the Big Five that I've been talking about. This is year four for me in this role, so it's year four of the Big Five. But first, certainly, is the achievement gap. What I want to share with the board are our DURG rankings, and these are comparatives of special education students to special education students in our DURG. So, whether it be Ms. Seidel and Ms. Hennessy doing the elementary report, or Mr. O'Brien have always shared the DURG rankings relative to our standardized test scores, and I wanted to do something similarly for the board this evening. So, the green is fantastic. Those are places where we're either holding our current wonderful performance, or we've moved up in DURG rank and change. So, certainly, on that top header, there is the information regarding our SBAK scores, grades three through six, in both English and in math, as well as our middle-school scores in SBAK, and our SAT scores in both ELA and math. So, you will see, I mean, a great jump of 10 places at the middle school in our middle school math. It's fantastic. And out of those six measures, three of them that I want to highlight, we're number one in our DURG. So, we are pretty pumped about that. Certainly, I add the caution of the yellow, which is the SAT ELA. We were in kind of first in our DURG, and we've dropped to fourth. This is really a truly different cohort than was measured last year. It's a completely different group of kids, where you do have some cohort overlap or some shared cohort with those other measures. You do not have that with the SAT. So, Katie Crisula, who's our Department Supervisor of Special Education at the high school, was not able to be here tonight. She is not feeling very well at all, but we've been digging very deeply into this data to look at the PSAT markers of these students, and how we're using those as predictors to really hone in on some of the skills of our students. But again, overall, we are incredibly pleased with our performance of our students with IEPs. These next two slides are a little bit of a different slice of the data, these side-by-side graphics. So, on the graphics to the left, this is first ELA. Again, you're going to see those groups of three through six, seven and eight, and 11 represented. The gold bar, and again, I'm looking at the graphic to the left, represents our general education performance, our, our overall students who have performed at or above goal. The pink bar are our special ed Simsbury students. So, the difference between the gold bar and the pink bars are, that's all Simsbury. And you can see the achievement gap between our gen ed students and our special ed students. What I always like to look at, and what I find very interesting, is the blue dot. The blue dot represents the general education average of the state. So, although we see the discrepancy within Simsbury of the achievement gap, we are, in some cases, look at our grades three through six, we're really nipping at the heels of our general education state counterparts. So, I think what that speaks to, although we clearly continue to have work to do on our own achievement gap in Simsbury, we have students, general ed students, that perform at very high levels, and our special education students in comparison, perform at high levels. But certainly, it's always a marker that we're looking to move. The green dot is special ed performance of state average. Okay? So, that gives you an idea. So, again, this is English Language Arts. On the right-hand side, and I wanted to share this with the board, because this gives you a sense of movement of performance from last year to this year. So, another bit of a different slice that I shared with you in that DURG table, but with very specific bars here. So, this was last year's performance of grades three through six. 39.2% of our students were at or above goal. This year, 46.9, right? So, some nice growth there. And although that they are not completely matched cohorts, we have a lot of cohort overlap and some of the same students represented. Same thing with our grades seven and eight. 33.7% last year in ELA to 40.9. Again, you see that dip from last year to this year in grade 11, but I do, again, want to emphasize with the board, that is a completely different cohort of tested students. Okay? Here is our math comparison. You know, certainly, in the general education front, we've discussed in previous reports You know, certainly, in the general education front, we've discussed in previous reports our math performance, and certainly, that is something that we in special ed are also focused on. So, again, you can see the Simsbury achievement gap discrepancy. But wanted to point out the history to the board on the right. We've remained about at the same place of students at or above goal in grades three through six, but a considerable jump of almost 10 percentage points at the middle school from last year to this year. So, again, last year's seventh-grade students are represented in this grade's eighth-grade bar, where those ninth graders are kind of off at the high school right now. But I wanted, again, to share that because of the growth. In our math, although we have dipped, again, a very different cohort of students, we still remain first in our DURG with our math performance on the SAT. So, again, something that we are very proud of. So, with these results, I wanted Nancy, absolutely, Tom.
Question about the blue dots on the math chart here, which shows that as the grade level goes up, the statewide performance is declining. Is that correct?
That is correct, as far as percentage at or above goals on those measures.
And yet, that is not true of the Simsbury school system.
That is correct.
That's pretty...
That's a fair assumption to make based upon that data.
Yeah, that's very impressive, yeah. Do we have any, I don't want to make this too long, but do we have any reason, is there any explanation for why statewide that number's going down so, I mean, so rapidly as students mature? Or is that a nationwide phenomenon?
I think that we're always seeing that trend. I think that that's something that we're very proud of in Simsbury, even as we grapple with some of our math scores at the elementary level. We always go, okay, but look on the end of things when they're in high school and look how they're performing. So, we believe that over time, we are making great gains in skill with our students in the area of math.
That's very impressive. Thank you.
So, Nancy, if you could speak a little bit about this data and what does that mean for our special education department and some of the professional development we're doing with our staff?
Sure. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you folks tonight. We are so excited about our continued efforts to be sitting at the table with our gen ed colleagues for this Math in Focus training that was started last year. And that's something fairly new for us. We've been doing special ed things, and now we're learning alongside. And it's been a really valuable asset to the team as a whole, being able to learn from each other as we do this initiative's been really great. One thing that's been super helpful are the math coaches. The math coaches are coming to us in addition to providing all of the extra work in special ed and really fine-tuning and helping us to target these at-risk students. And really helping us become the masters of the manipulative, really getting them into the concrete and understanding the why, which is really important about the whole math concept. In addition to the teachers, the math coaches have also provided training for our paraprofessionals. They're going to be doing one later in the spring, as well as continuing to do some PD with the ESS teachers. We take the same information that the general ed teachers do and incorporate it into our SLOs. Last year, we did some really nice look at the math work, and as you can see, there was some result that kind of went along with when you're looking at something really closely. So, that's really great.
Our SLOs being our teacher goals?
Right.
And our teacher growth.
On our PD. Just wrote down what's...
Student learning outcomes.
Yeah, always ask. Special ed is notorious for its acronyms. We're great with that. The other place that we're really, yeah, go ahead.
Just a question about that, too. I mean, the board's been pretty aggressive, as has the district, about math coaches from a budgetary standpoint. And I'm quite sure we're going to have some more discussion about it this year, as we did in the last two years. You had mentioned that the math coaches are working both in general education space and also special education space. What I'm wondering is whether, when we have our dialogue about budget, is there such a thing as a math coach that is specifically trained to work specifically and specialize in working with special education students or not? Because if there is such a thing, I'm just wondering if that's something that we should have a discussion about when we think about our budgets.
So, Tom, I think that it's all about the collaboration of the skill sets that every single one of the individuals bring to the table. So, certainly, the math coaches are bringing that deep, rich math content to that table as we talk about students. Our general education teachers are also learning about that math content, and they're getting deeper in understanding the misconceptions of their students and broadening their understanding. What the special ed teachers bring to the table is the concepts of how certain disabilities might manifest themselves through that content. So, I wouldn't say that there's a special math coach that also specializes in special ed students. It's what each of us brings as far as expertise that makes that collaboration so strong, so poignant, and so rewarding for our student results.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think finally, just on this piece, is the data teams that each of the schools have. We have special education representation at those data teams to be talking about these numbers, how they're impacting both our special ed students and our at-risk students, so that we can hopefully keep some of those kids from having to be serviced in special ed and stay in the gen ed classroom.
That's great.
Some great work. We're really excited.
So, certainly, we're always looking at student achievement, but there's other markers of these Big Five that we also look at as well. Certainly, reading and dyslexia, I had shared with the board before, some of our efforts regarding building capacity among our staff, to be able to address students and how they read and when they're having difficulties reading. That is the key and the gateway to learning. So, we need to make sure that our students have those foundational skills. You might also recall that we've been working very hard to bring our Farmington Valley districts together in a very collaborative way. Already this year, we've offered two very significant professional developments, one for the elementary level, one for the middle school and high school level around reading and dyslexia. We've brought some nationally renowned experts in the field right here to the Farmington Valley. And again, this is really about capacity building. And it wasn't just special ed teachers that were at, that was at that PD. It was also our language arts consultants and our Simsbury reading intervention teachers. So, again, together, we are building our understanding of craft, building our understanding of diagnosing some of these more difficult issues, but also, how does this result in good, sound instruction that gets those results that we want to see for students and get those gaps to close? So, that's what's happening in reading and dyslexia. We're also going to be doing some specialized training in what's called a Wilson Reading Instructional Program. It's very systemic, explicit ways to teach reading, so our staff is going to be engaging in that work. In addition, certainly, we're going to be hearing from some pretty amazing individuals who have transitioned after that big T into the adult world in just a moment. But this is really what we're preparing students for. What does that transition look like after Simsbury Public Schools? Is it looking like a transition into the work world? Is it looking like a continuation in a four-year competitive college? And we certainly have that spectrum. This year, our Transition Task Force, which is made up of special education staff across the district, we're really focusing on student independence. So, whether that be the preschool student who is learning to walk or pour their own juice because they have motor skill difficulties, or does that mean our student who is ready to graduate, who has gotten access into many tier-one colleges, and they're trying to navigate how to advocate for what they need because they're an adult with disability that needs accommodations on a college campus? So, what does that look like for our students? And at every level, how do we increase that independence? And you'll hear a little bit more about our transition work when I also talk about our Special Education Parent Teacher Organization, or SEPTO. Finally, for here, mental health, certainly, I've shared with the board some of our data around our increased numbers of students that are exhibiting anxiety. That is one of the reasons why we brought Lynn Lyons here in November for a very successful PD for both the parents as well as our teachers. We've gotten a lot of great feedback from our teaching staff saying, hey, when we have that full-day PD in March, can you do a repeat of a lot of the sessions? Because we got a couple of choices, but we want more of that. So, that is one of the great next steps that we're going to take, is to put a different kind of bow on some of those sessions, but again, to increase capacity. That's also going to be a theme that you're going to hear. There's also been some individual schools that have started book clubs around Lynn Lyons' work. And I'm going to be in the spring offering a district book club around her text, anxious child, anxious parent. So, you'll be hearing more about that. But the board may have heard out, kind of, in the general public, this whole concept of social-emotional learning. And a lot is being deemed as social-emotional learning, whether that be some of our mindset work around empathy and resilience. But social-emotional learning can also be around the direct instruction around things like executive functioning, and how do we plan for tasks and organize our time? So, Erin and I are going to be working about bringing a group of individuals together to look at what might be some different avenues in which we can explore this social-emotional learning here in the Simsbury Public Schools. Certainly, we've planted seeds of that in all of our schools, but we want to expand that a bit more under this umbrella of mental health. Finally, service delivery. How do we make sure that we have the right specialized instruction for every student? And Nancy's going to talk a little bit more about those efforts.
Sure. We have a lot of ground to cover. Math, English Language Arts, executive functioning, anxiety. So, we only have a finite amount of time. So, it's something that we spend a lot of time talking about, how to be most efficient with that work. One of the things that we're trying to do, my colleagues and I, is really take a look at the IEP as a whole. And we're providing some continued professional development with teachers around how do we make that through line be really clear, really efficient, identify through some of these assessment tools, what are the real high-leverage skills that if we teach into those skills, a lot of other things will fall into place, so that we're really getting at students and what they need to be doing next. So, we've been spending a lot of time on getting that through line, talking about grids, making sure those little Ts between myself and the middle school and the high school, and from preschool to me are really fluid, so we're really all on the same page to get there. And that takes a lot of communication and a lot of time. So, we've been spending that time doing that. One of the other great service delivery that you heard about last year is the co-teaching model that's really happening at the middle school and high school, and is even coming into some places in the elementary school. Because it's great when a special ed teacher can, in time, see something that's lagging and get it right then and there, as opposed to waiting till they have that pull-out session or waiting two days later. So, it's been a real effective tool. And there's been times when the kids didn't know who the special ed teacher and who the gen ed teacher was, which is really great. It serves all of the kids because you get a two-for-one in those cases. So, I think making sure we're looking for those high-leverage skills, making sure we're doing those co-teaching, I think those service delivery tweaks, I think, are really going to enhance the quality of work we're doing.
That's great.
So, just some additional updates. First, I had shared with the board that, starting in this school year, there is a mandate that we start billing for medical-based services, whether that be physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech. And I think very smartly so. We got our team up and running last quarter, but I just wanted to share with the board that we're doing that very effectively, smoothly, and that is going well, that Medicaid building. But it was a big effort on the part of all staff. And certainly, there's kind of administrative components to that, but it's going well. What I alluded to before, Special Education Parent Teacher Organization. This has really been rejuvenated over the past four years. We have some incredible parents, some students that sit on SEPTO, and just wanted to highlight some of their efforts over the course of the past year. Certainly, you know that we sponsored the Day on Capitol Hill last spring. I've been told nobody wants to touch it now because we set the bar too high. I'm like, that's, hey, you're going to have to deal. But SEPTO really works to build bridges between home and school, and also does a lot of professional development for families and parents. So, this is just a variety of programs that we've offered. We try to do something every other month. One thing that I'm very proud of is we're having conversations with the Chamber of Commerce, and the Rotary is next. So, Rotary, if you're watching SCTV, you're going to be getting a call in the next couple of weeks. But we're going to hear about a pretty dynamic business called Beans &amp; Company in just a moment. And part of the premise of Beans &amp; Company is the acknowledgement that there is a higher unemployment rate for our adults with disabilities. And what we've been trying to do with SEPTO is to go out to our Simsbury businesses and say, here, we have some pretty incredible consumers who will be Simsbury loyal and business loyal to you, but we also have amazing potential in our students to be potential employees. And let's talk about more how to build those partnerships, so we are lifting up our community on every single level. So, you'll be hearing more about that work, but SEPTO's been an incredible partner in that. Also, our annual performance report from the state. So, our state is required to have a six-year plan. It has 16 indicators, and it's required to do so to make sure that we are meeting the requirements and the purposes of the Individuals and Disabilities with Education Act. So, the state will look at different indicators and, within the district, and say, are you doing what you're supposed to be doing? And we meet all the requirements. So, I just wanted to share that with you, but certainly something to be proud of. So, speaking of proud, we are all about our mission not just being words on paper, right? I started with that, that students are in the center, and we want to make sure that our students are independently and successfully participating in our larger Simsbury community and our world community. So, here today, I have four pretty dynamic young adults, three of whom are graduates of the Simsbury Public Schools, one, Megan, who is a student at the Avon Public Schools. However, I have the privilege to know Megan because she's a student at our Farmington Transition Academy, Farmington Valley Transition Academy. So, I'm going to ask the four of them to come up to the table. Ladies, I'm going to have you sit. Zeke and Nick, I'm going to have you stand behind. And they're just going to take a couple of minutes to share a pretty awesome business venture that they're all a part in of, and I really think it's an example of our mission alive here in Simsbury. So, if you wouldn't mind, maybe you can do some translating too with Megan. Okay, Kate, Megan, you're on. Okay, that's nice of you. Going to let Megan go first.
I'm just going to read, and she's going to say.
Got your back. Do you want to stand up? Do you want to do it? You want that here? Okay, we've worked on this together, so she's going to sign this for you. She does use a communication board, but she felt that this is her main mode of communication, so we're going to use sign language.
Hi, everybody. No, you do it. Hi, everyone. My name is Megan Morrison. I am 20 years old, and I'm from Avon. I went to school at Pine Grove, Thompson Brook School, Avon Middle School, and Avon High School. I currently attend Farmington Valley Transition Academy located on the University of Hartford campus. I will be graduating in June.
Yay!
We're all excited for it. In school, I have learned to become more independent and work hard at the jobs I have. Let's talk about the jobs you have right now. My first job is at CVS. My second job is at Burlington Coat Factory. And my third job is at Big Y. When I graduate in June, I want to have a job, or maybe two, where I'm a part of a team. That is really important to me.
My name is Kianex. I am 21 years old, and I live in Simsbury. I went to preschool at Torrey Hills School, grade school at Lomley School, and SHS. After I graduated from SHS, I went to the Farmington Valley Transition Academy for three years. And now, I am an intern at UConn Health Center in the project search program. My teachers had my speech, my speeches, my speech, my personal speech, and my job. Coaches taught me how to work hard, work hard, the pedagogical skills and job skills. I work at Wessie Pizza. I was in my contract, where I am a hostess, and I am a bus tables, and I am also doing to work at Abby's Co. I love my life, and I am thankful to everyone who helped me have the best life that I have right now.
Thank you so much for inviting me here tonight to speak about my exciting new job at Beans &amp; Co. at Beans and Co. My name is Nixon Akori, and I graduated from Simsbury High School in 2014 and from FETA in 2016. I was asked to speak about how Simsbury High School prepared me for this job. In my current position, I work directly with customers, taking their orders and putting it in the register and giving them their change. I love doing this. I think Simsbury High School prepared me. My speech teachers helped me a lot. We worked very hard on articulation so that people could understand what I was saying. They, along with my teachers and parents, helped me perfect my conversation skills. I worked very hard on math, year after year after year, and now I do math every day.
Irony.
I always felt valued and part of the community of SHS, Simsbury High School. I really love participating in the Unified Program and having the opportunity to manage the sports teams. I worked on advocacy skills throughout SHS and FETA. It is so important to know how to ask for help when something is confusing or something doesn't feel right. So as you can see, Simsbury and the education I received here has helped me in becoming the employee I am today. And please come and visit Beans.
So where is it? You've got to give a little promo here.
Beans and Co. is a coffee shop inside the New England Pasta Company on Route 44, and it's owned by our back said. And it's owned, we're owned by Kim Morrison and Noel Alex, the best. And we're like, we're like family.
We are.
Yes.
All right, Zeke.
Okay.
Come home and tell us a little bit about Beans and Co. and how you got involved.
Sure. So my name's Zeke Kotkin. I graduated from the high school in 2017, and I've had the distinct privilege of being involved with the Special Education Community in Simsbury for a while. The summer after I graduated, I worked as a paraprofessional at Latimer Lane. Nope, Squadron Lineal on Underwood School, that one. And I also was involved in the Invited Sports Programs as well. And so I think that, like Sue was saying, the whole Mission Alive component, I think the spotlight that the Simsbury Public Education and the Simsbury Schools District puts on ability and not disability for their special education students is really important. And I think that does live through Beans and Company. A lot of things that I've experienced working with individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities appear to be minutia to people outside of that community, but in the classroom, learning how to count, going through even basic skills that we believe to be rudimentary are really, really important and then are shown through the workforce. And so when you employ people who may have disabilities, they really are able to shine through when they're given this background and given this, given these skills at the, you know, elementary, middle school, and high school level. And so I think that being here today is definitely, and having these awesome, absolutely employable adults is a testament to the Simsbury Education, Simsbury Public Schools education that they're given and to the money that the Board of Ed allocates to the program annually. And I think that Beans and Company is absolutely a testament to the importance of putting a spotlight on ability because already, I mean, the revenue has been astronomical compared to what the New England Pasta Company was bringing in beforehand. So I think that just changing this narrative about employability and ability really excites people and gets people engaged in a community that otherwise doesn't see a lot of friendly faces.
Awesome.
Excellent.
Great job.
It's an excellent quiche, too, I just have to say. It was really good.
I'm just serving at Beans, too. Second one.
How about a big smile over there?
Oh, talk about the food? Yeah? The food?
Oh, the food? The food is great. We're open. We're open to the last to plug in. We're endorsed by the Board of Ed right now. We offer it from seven to 11 for breakfast and then 11 to 3 for lunch. The kitchen closes at 3, but we still serve coffee until 5, so check us out.
I think Megan's your Vice President of Marketing. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Excellent job. Okay, you have to. That's the hardest part.
Oh, no, she always done that.
I know. I know. I always kick you out of the spotlight.
No, 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 me. You judge me.
Oh, okay. Uh-huh, uh-huh. Kate and I go way back. Kate and I go way back. So I really do think there's nothing more to be said. It's the Mission Alive. It's what we strive to do each and every day through our special education programming. So I do want to now transition into the budget portion of this review. Certainly wanted to share with you some data on in-migration, historical staffing in special ed, program costs, funding sources, and our budget request. And you may go. It's absolutely okay. I understand completely. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You guys, and honestly, without the support of Simsbury Public Schools for the last 21 years, I can attest that with 100% sincerity, Kate would not be where she is today without each and every person. So, yes, and you too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you, my mom, for helping me open Beans.
Yeah.
For your ass. Thanks, Ken. So we always hear anecdotally when people move in and you hear stories about why they might move in. And, well, we moved here because we have a student.
Sue, would you mind terribly if we interrupt you for just a moment?
Not at all.
And we could move on to our gift, and then we would be happy to talk about budget, if that would be all right with you?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, too.
Not at all.
But we have, we are so thankful to have, we're so happy to have John Cia and Henick. And would you want to come up and tell us?
Yeah. So I will.
Our gift, we are getting a gift from Dino Nobel.
Yeah. So this is the third year that Dino Nobel is actually supporting First Robotics, which we have up at the high school. And each year, they've been increasing how much they've been giving us. So this year, we're coming to ask you to accept this donation for $2,000. So I'm happy about that. And I know if Wayne wants to speak a bit. Wayne's been with us since the start, nine years.
Since the start, I was with UTC. I've been here on one of our first UTC checks. Then I moved to Dino Nobel, and since then, kind of got them $500, and I did $1,000 last year, and I got the $2,000 this year.
Wow, that's wonderful.
Well, we really appreciate all of it.
Thank you so much.
It's a tremendous program. It's an absolutely tremendous program.
Which is because of all of your donations and support, for sure. And we need to make a motion.
Oh.
To accept this generous.
Somebody teed. It's been dissolved 13 minutes.
I'll move that the proposed gift to the First Robotics team at Simsbury High School from Dino Nobel Corporation totaling $2,000 be approved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Do we need a picture of the check? Who do you want the picture with?
We have one at the school.
Oh, good. Perfect.
With the whole team.
That's great. Perfect.
Next year, we'll do it again this year.
That's the best.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you so much for coming in. Thank you for waiting.
Are you invited to come anytime and see what we're doing at First Robotics?
Thank you.
We're there every single day for the next six weeks.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your support. We really, really appreciate it. Makes a huge difference.
I have two sons that have come through the program, and actually, the first one got one of his internship jobs because of the experience he got from the program.
Wonderful. That's great.
It's a wonderful program.
Well, thank you so much.
Even though my kids are gone, I'm still here.
That's what we count on.
Way of sucking in.
Thank you very much, Sue. I'm sorry to interrupt. I appreciate your graciousness.
No, thank you for the queue. I didn't see them come in here. So we've heard before anecdotally of families moving to Simsbury because of special education. And I was struggling with, okay, how do we put a metric around that? And I think I found it. I really took the data from the last day of school and the first day of school. And I said, what did it look like as far as our withdrawals of students that in the general education population, and what did it look like in special ed? So here's that table. So you'll find a 22% increase in general ed, but double that for students with identified needs. So this is a metric that I'm going to continue to look at over time. I also reached out to my area colleagues in the Farmington Valley, and there was only one other district out of close to 10 that had this similar patterning. So again, something that I'm going to continue to look at, but it puts those anecdotes into metric format, and we call that the in-migration. I also want to share with you the staffing history of special ed, and I'm going to go back five years and do that five-year look. You know, the certified, certainly, we've gone up almost six positions. We have had a decrease in general ed enrollment, but our special ed enrollment continues to grow for many reasons. Maybe one of them is that in-migration slide I just showed you. But behind that certified number was an additional teacher, for example, at the high school to work with students with intellectual disabilities, a teacher for students specifically on the autism spectrum, preschool staff. And we've seen an increase in our preschool numbers over time. Also, sometimes you are in the work and people go, oh, my gosh, you know, we've cut paraeducators. That's actually not true, and I wanted to share that with the board. Over the past five years, we've added almost seven additional paraeducators. You know, what that data in the previous slide doesn't show you, it certainly shows you those numbers, but it doesn't show you intensity that are sometimes associated with those numbers. So if we have a student move in, for example, out of state, and that student has an individualized education plan that has very specific staff associated with that plan, we have to follow that plan or reallocate accordingly. But the board has been extremely supportive of special education staffing, and I'm most appreciative of that and wanted you to see those metrics as well. So now we get to the cost. Comparatively to last year, we're at about the same place as far as 22.44% of all Board of Ed expenditures really fall within special education programming. Last year was 22.55%, okay? But those are our big buckets up above. Certainly salaries and benefits attribute for the lion's share of our costs out of district tuition. I'm very proud of the work that Burke and I have done over the past four years to forecast what those costs will be, and we've seen a plateau in some of those costs. Transportation is another one. Many of our students require specialized transportation, but that transportation also includes, you know, buses to Farmington Valley Transitional Academy, to some of our internship sites and work placements. So that all falls into that bucket. And purchased services and supplies, that has a compilation of different measures in it. If we need to do some outside testing or evaluations, that's included in that. But those, again, are the big buckets that constitute $16 million of our overall budget or 22% of all the Board of Ed expenditures.
Just a question about that, please.
Please.
These are the numbers for this year that you're showing here?
Yes, sir.
Current expenditures. And it's 22.44%, roughly the same as last year. Is in fact, is it in fact true, and I don't know if it is, that the special education program costs as a percentage of total expenditures has stayed at about that level over the last four or five years?
We're about that, I would, within one or two percentage points, I would say, right?
Yeah. So there has been growth in the expense, cost of the program, but about in line with the growth generally in Board of Education spending.
Yeah. And so I want to share with a little bit with the board about where do our sources of funding come from. And just as a reminder, our first is our Individual with Disabilities Education Grant, okay? This is federal money, of which we receive just under $1 million here in Simsbury. Funds are allocated based upon certainly many factors, but the, it's predicated on serving students with disabilities from ages three, that birth to three, that Leah Ko is the preschool supervisor, really, that's her bailiwick all the way up to age 21 for our students with more intense disabilities. These funds come to the state. The state can hold on to some of that money, but the preponderance of that money does go to the districts, and we use that mostly of just under $1 million for staffing here in Simsbury. The second funding source is our Excess Cost Grant. So excess costs have a very specific formula. We take our per pupil expenditure, and if it exceeds four and a half times that expenditure, which in Simsbury is about $77,000, we can apply for an excess cost grant. Typically, any expenditures over that $77,000, we receive back 70% to 75% of that for a total nut of about $1.2 million here in Simsbury. And then the rest of that, about 85% of our overall costs, is through operating. Ooh, pressed the button one too many times. You know, in line with staffing requests, I do have one this year, and that is for a secondary social worker. I know Mr. O'Brien certainly shared this need at the high school. Again, I want to thank the board because over time, some of that certified addition has been in our elementary social work, in that staffing, because we have found proven success in addressing some of those social emotional issues of our students through these positions of social workers. They are great at connecting families with community resources, whether those be therapeutic resources or other financial resources. And due to the uptick that I've shared before in students with anxiety and other mental health needs, the uptick of students not with individualized education plans, but 504 plans, which allows students to receive accommodations based on disability, we really feel that this social worker that would be stationed at the high school would help to address some of those needs that we're seeing. So that's my sole staff request for this year. Sue, this would make how many social workers at the high school? It would be two. Two full? Two full-time. Okay. And then we have how many at the elementary level? At the elementary level, we now have three full-time. Is there anybody at Henry James? There is, and we have one at Henry James. So when I first was in this position four years ago, we didn't even have one full-time social worker at the elementary. We had point seven, and that really can be attributed to your support that we now have full, three full-time social workers at the elementary, one at the middle, and this would make two at the high school.
And this individual for this position would be dedicated to the special education program?
Well, they fall under my department, but certainly with our social workers, with our school psychologists, those staff members are accessible to both students with special needs and our general education population. And I think that having that accessibility is really helping to decrease the stigma around accessing those mental health supports within our public schools.
So this special education count that we have, these are, I'm sorry, social worker count that we have, they are multipurpose.
Yes.
They are, and financially, they fall under the special ed line item.
Thank you.
So I understand that that was a pretty lengthy report, but certainly we'll take any other questions or comments from the board.
Sue, do you have, and I'm so apologize if it's in here and I missed it, the percentage of students that you, of the total population for the last five years, how much has that, what, do we have that anywhere exactly, how many students fall under your umbrella and how that has changed, or just that 22% number?
Sure. No, I, that, the 22% number is the amount of Board of Ed, special ed, as reflected in how much we spend as an overall Board of Education budget. What you're asking for right now, our prevalence rate, which is what percentage of our total population are students with identified disabilities, is about a mid-13%, and that fluctuates. What also fluctuates is our actual number of students with special education needs. So certainly, there are students that we service within the public schools. We also have students that attend magnets, but also have individualized education plans, so we oversee their services. And we also oversee some service plans of students who are in our non-public schools. So when you look at that entire number, we're about 600 in number in totality, but they sit in different places within the public schools and the who are in our non-public schools. So when you look at that entire number, we're about 600 in number in totality, but they sit in different places within the public schools in the greater Simsberry community.
Has that percentage changed a lot, that number, that 600, over the last five years? Or has it been pretty?
The percentage is increasing.
Okay.
By a couple of percents. You know, we've ranged from, you know, and it ranges by school as well. Some schools may be hovering around that 9%, while some other schools, and it depends upon the population, right? Because we have some very specialized programs in some schools, like Ready, Set, Go. So that might increase the percentage within a school.
Okay.
Because that's where that specialized program is held. But we are seeing an uptick in our prevalence rate. Again, I checked this with the Farmington Valley, and that's a pretty steady and consistent pattern.
I just want to, Burke's Budget Book has all the answers. So it doesn't have the percentage, but Jen, that historical sheet?
Budget History Tab.
If you go to Budget History Tab.
Very first page.
On the first page, to Burke's point, there's a history of the number of special ed students.
Right. Look, I'm going to use my book.
Data from 98, 99, all the way to current.
Judy's happy.
And you can bounce that, you can bounce that off the enrollment, and you can get a percentage.
This is an amazing diagram.
I just wanted to commend you on, there's some really good numbers in there. And I want to go back to the first, to in the first five or six pages of the paragraph with the bars.
Yeah.
Your comment was, the special ed population is nipping up the heels of the average state general population. But if you look at those numbers, too, and especially in the ELA, the percentage above average for both the general ed and the special ed is nearly identical on the ELA side, and it's close to on the math side. So just want to hats off to you and everything you and your team's doing.
Thank you.
It's great scores.
That's the best chart.
Yeah.
That's a good one. It's really interesting.
No, it certainly is a collective effort. And, you know, I didn't necessarily highlight them this year because I have so much in years past. But if there is one thing that I know is that I have the right people on the bus working for these kids. Certainly, Heather Tanis is here, the Middle School Department Supervisor, Leah Ko in preschool. You've heard from Nancy, and together with Christine Golden and Katie Crisula, like, these women are passionate, and they're leading great work for kids. So want to acknowledge them.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much.
I just have one more question. Getting behind the numbers. Even if the population as a percentage of total with special needs is remaining pretty much the same, or maybe growing a little bit, is it in fact true that over time, the degree of disability within the population is, is it stable, or is it growing? And if it is growing, does that mean that even if we have the same number of clients, if you will?
Mm-hmm.
Are they having greater, on average, disabilities that require more effort to deal with?
So Tom, when I was talking about that in-migration slide, I had shared what isn't reflected there is the level of intensity associated with need.
That's, that's the point, yeah.
Right, that's the point. So when Jen's asking about numbers, if you have two students, one could be a student with a language delay and may not need as much special education hours or intensity as a student with an intellectual disability.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the story behind the numbers that you don't get to see, but we certainly have to respond to. So whether that's an intellectual disability or a serious mental illness, you know, that all falls under the special education umbrella, and it falls under their individualized education plan. So that level of intensity does shift. It's something that we continuously keep an eye on to look for trends.
Well, the only reason I raise the question is, if in fact, the level of intensity is moving up, then wouldn't, wouldn't that mean that we may have to consider even more investment in special education because of that intensity?
So let me give you an example where I think we have responded really well. One of those metrics was around certified additions that we've made, right? A little over five certified staff, almost six. What we were finding is that we had an increase of students with intellectual disabilities, okay? They typically come with more service hours, service needs. We responded by adding two teachers at the high school because this population was aging. They were coming into the high school. We know we have to be very careful around staffing and student ratios. So the board supported two additional teaching positions to address that level of intensity. That was one example. There are different examples, but that's really about me and my team looking at what the current needs are and projecting what the future needs are, and how do we allocate and reallocate staff to meet our students with special needs accordingly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just wanted to ask a question. Nancy, you touched on it a little bit, but co-teaching kind of working its way down to the elementary level, is that one of your goals to kind of bring that more into the elementary classrooms? That would be part of the next Big Five, in the, in the next phase of the Big Five. I think it's a really effective and efficient service delivery model. Certainly, there are lessons learned that we are, we want to enhance at the middle school, so I think it absolutely has potential.
And I guess just to add to that, the celebration around the fact that we're at the table, learning the Math and Focus allows our teachers, the content knowledge, they need to be able to be those good co-partners in the classroom.
Great point.
And not just the special ed. So they're walking in, and they can pick up the book and teach the lesson just as well as, as the content area teachers. So it's really a good partnership that feels equal.
So that's all right, that is what's going on with Math and Focus through 8K8?
Whenever we can make that happen, we're trying to afford those opportunities. Being able to be at the table is giving us the skills to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Exciting work.
It is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Leclair, do you have something to share?
Matt's going to kick us off. So we have just a quick update on the capital presentation as we move through the budget process. So Burke and I had our opportunity to meet for the first time with town staff. Their timeline's a little behind ours, so they're still in process of reviewing any new requests that may come forward. So your exhibit discussed a little bit of the movement that we've had in our plan. Of course, we remember the annual exercise of trying to make everything fit under the debt service line, right? So that's the process that starts now. It's starting with new staff on the town side, so it's a learning experience for them as well. So Burke's really been instrumental in supporting them in that work. But Burke's going to talk through a couple of the priorities and some of the movement we've made in our efforts to kind of work with the town and coordinate our plans, hopefully for successful budgeting as we move forward. Okay, so, well, this is the second draft. This is the third time we've talked about capital. The first was really looking at that roll, roll forward of what was in the plan that was looked at last year. Back in the end of October, we talked about the security need status. Neil and I updated on the 2018-19 security improvement dollars, and we quickly realized that with the need to look at vestibules in a standard way at all of our K6 schools, and now we've moved on to looking at the high school, that we're going to need more dollars to finish that out. So that's why we, we have the $750,000 district security improvements in the first year. And then we touched on, on the climate control last time, but the focus in the first year of this plan is the $2.6 million for the high school partial roof replacement. And in the exhibit, I gave you a little bit more of the detail about where that cost estimate came from and the total amount of square footage. So it's more than 100,000 square feet of roof with eligibility for the maximum state partial reimbursement through that grant process. It would mean that we couldn't do the work without first getting the grant application in. So it would really be a full summer out in the summer of 2020. And then also, since our, our last meeting, as Matt mentioned, looking at where the town is at and looking at where that 6.7% debt guideline is at, we are recommending to move forward the Turfield project and the Henry James Tennis Project from year one to year two. So this draft, number two, reflects that movement. And then lastly, we have some new information about the cost and the process of complying with underground storage tank removals. So we have to do that at both the high school and Terrafill. The difference at Terrafill is there is no natural gas source there. So we've moved to generally heating with natural gas at our other schools, but Terrafill does not yet have that as an option. So we do have to put in a new tank, which, according to the engineers that we've been working with, is greatly more complicated and expensive now to reinstall. We've had some experience taking them out, and that was quite inexpensive. But to actually put the newest standard in, the estimate that we now have is $325,000 for both of those projects. So that has moved from the CNR thinking, where we thought we could cover it through that funding, to needing to put it as its own capital project. So that is the latest info. And as Matt said, you know, we have the facilities master plan that's taking place. So we know that, you know, this is what is the known now. And then going, going forward, we're going to have a lot more information next year to really look in a comprehensive way at all of our, all of our buildings.
The safety and welfare is obviously a priority with the roof and the, and the safety, but thank you very much.
Any other questions? I'll be answering them for next time.
Any other questions? Excellent. We are opening up the floor to another public audience. Anyone who would like to share? Thank you all for coming. Our next board meeting will be Tuesday, January 22nd, here. And I would accept a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, everybody.